Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I'm going to call the January 22 Select Board meeting to order, and it is relatively unusual to have a number of people in the audience. So I'm going to make my reminder, please try to limit your cross-conversations. If you need to chat, step out in the hall. It's very hard for us to stay focused if the audience is... So, thank you very much. Okay. We have no changes to the agenda. Announcements, Libby?
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have round four coming up of some committee vacancies. Council for Human Services, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Town of Nantucket Scholarship Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals alternate. There's a lot of information on the town website. If people are interested in applying for any of these, we certainly encourage public interest. The State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, Mass Wildlife, will be holding two virtual public hearings. One tomorrow, January 23 at 1:30, and the other tomorrow, January 23 at 6:00. Both are via Zoom, and they are relating to proposed regulations for deer hunting and other deer-related issues. So if people are interested in... This is going to be regulations pertaining to the Vineyard and Nantucket specifically. So if people are interested in deer issues, they should really try to tune into this. There's also a written feedback option that has to be in by, I believe, February 5. And there is information on the state website, as noted on the Select Board agenda. The master plan is being updated, as hopefully everybody by now knows. And there are a few opportunities to share thoughts about it and provide input. One is a survey that's open until Friday, January 24. And that survey link is listed on the Select Board agenda. The Francis Street Beach Coast to Resiliency Improvement Project. There was a virtual open house held on January 13 and also January 15, and the recording is available for viewing. And that is a link also on the Board agenda. If you want to watch it and take a survey, we would highly encourage that. And lastly, our special permitting function in the town is moving to the Culture and Tourism Department. As of January 1, we've transitioned film, photo shoot, and special event permitting from the Police Department to Culture and Tourism. And that is under the direction of our new Cultural Affairs and Special Events Coordinator, Dee Weatherly, Deena Weatherly. And her email address is on the agenda as well. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Libby. Select Board announcements, comments. Tom?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I just wanted to quickly comment that last Friday, I went and spoke to the eighth graders at the new school. There's been lots of national civic happenings with the new president being sworn in and spoke to them on town government and structure of how town government functions. And they asked me a lot of really great questions. They were absolutely terrific, and those are smart kids. And they are the next generation, so I hope they get involved someday. Forest bells class, eighth grade.
Anybody else? Okay. I just wanted to make note of something I read in Daybreak, which was that the Dreamland Theater took a youth theater group to a competition in Atlanta, and they won. And I just thought, it's really cool that little Nantucket has that kind of team... And I guess the award was for teamwork. It was like a group theater thing. And so I'm just really proud of our kids that went down there. And congratulations to Laura Gallagher-Burn for her leadership of that group. So trying to do some good news in Select Board announcements. So if anybody wants to send me anything they want me to share, please do. Or us. Okay. We don't have any follow-up from... There were no questions from public comment last week. This is now public comment, open for items not on the agenda. Remember the three-minute rule. Erica, timer. And I see Val heading to the mic. I'm going to take Val first.
Hi, thank you. That was really great about Laura.
Yeah.
It was awesome. I'm here to talk about...
Val, just remember, state your full name, please.
Oh, Val Oliver. About the B S E E and that whole thing that's going on. I just got an email today from Zoom saying that the meeting was canceled about the Vineyard Wind blade failure. And I was kind of shocked to learn that Boem had issued and approved a revised construction and operations plan without any public input. I know... Anyway, this was a clear rush to get the ineffective industrial power plant underway before the administration change. Yet, it's another clear example of how real data doesn't seem to be digested and taken in when they're permitting these things. And that's been our experience all along for the last few years of trying to get more information. The public comment period for this B S E E investigation was announced on Christmas Eve and given six days to make comment. And, I mean, hello. Who's paying attention on Christmas Eve till right before New Year's to make comment? So I thought that was a little disingenuous. Posting it during the holidays, when people are distracted, is clearly not wanting input. Thankfully, though, the Nantucket public responded and sent in about 500 questions, which was awesome. And the meeting was postponed from the 20th of January to February 3. It was only today, through the Zoom messaging saying the meeting was canceled, that I learned the meeting was canceled. So I'm just wondering why, as of this afternoon, the town's offshore wind site update and news was not updated. I looked to see. And we found out that Vineyard Wind has been allowed to resume operations. And the way we found out was through the media. And there was no mention of what will ever change to ensure this pollution event, is what they call it, will ever happen again. So I thought, you guys, as the Select Board, knowing our grave concerns, should be on top of this and in contact with our good neighbors. They haven't... They're allowing them to go forward. There's no information about any new guardrails and ADLS or anything else.
Val?
Yes, I know. I have to stop, which is always unfortunate. So let's join together and try to get this resolved.
Thank you. Mary?
Hi, Mary Chot, 70th Street.
I know we don't usually respond during public comment...
We're not going to.
About the notice?
It's okay.
Okay.
We'll respond appropriately. Go ahead, Mary.
The East Coast citizens are celebrating President Trump's executive order to stop the offshore wind development on the East Coast. It's hard to celebrate when every day that I walk Smith Point, there's new blade debris washing up. I'm collecting it. It's hard to celebrate when a few days ago, we learned 66 blades that have been installed are out there with the same bonding defect as the one that split open and dumped its 60 tons of fiberglass and toxic styrofoam. We were given the opportunity to comment on that webinar that has been canceled, yet we were not given that information that GE Vernova and Bessie had as of December 5, when that proposed COP addendum was released that stated the plan to take down 66 blades, that acknowledged that 66 blades are defective, at risk, and need to come down. We didn't have that information, yet they did, and it was withheld. So, as Val said, we don't know if there's going to be another webinar. And honestly, until President Trump gains control of these federal agencies, I think it's a waste of time, because they covered up that 66-blade defects. To me, intentionally. So what I ask of you is, now we have a president who is open to us. Nantucket is uniquely situated to absorb all these impacts from Vineyard Wind, the very impacts that was a catalyst for the outcry on the East Coast. To stop this industry, yet we need a special cure. Not just to stop the offshore wind projects, but to ensure our safety. There should be no construction going on. Perhaps every turbine that has these blades should be surrounded by a boom, ready to collect. I know for a fact, they couldn't get the blade pieces that fell off, like following that initial blade collapse. They're still resting on the ocean floor. So what happens when another blade goes down? Or two, or 10? What happens if 20 blades fall down this winter before they have a chance to take them down? It doesn't seem like anybody is concerned about this. I looked on the AIS Tracker, Marine Vessel Tracker app. There's no jackup vessel out on the site that is necessary to take the blades down. When do they start taking them down? I know they've taken a few down. The only vessels out there that this tracker is showing is the cable-laying vessels. So they're continuing construction. And as far as I could see, there's no blade removal going on. So that's what I'm asking the Board, to contact President Trump. And please ask for a special cure for Nantucket.
Thanks, Mary. Pete?
Sure. Peter Burke, the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to give a quick update of where we stand and ask a couple of questions from the power outage at Stroll. I know we were here the Wednesday after Stroll, and we've had some really good progress made in a couple of different fronts. Firstly, during that meeting, we had asked the DPU and National Grid, who had said, hey, they're going to investigate, kind of do their autopsy on the cable. We had asked that the results of that be made public so that claims would be able to be determined. Right? If there's any fault determined, you figure that claims are still in the works. We were contacted by National Grid that said that their investigation found no fault in that cabling. I'm certainly not qualified to call them out on that or not. I know the DPU is kind of the watchdog on that. So I just haven't heard officially from the DPU or National Grid on if there's a public statement releasing the findings of that cable failure. It's all been kind of hearsay and one-off. And so on behalf of our downtown businesses, I would like to get an answer, an official statement, from hopefully National Grid and DPU. I have outstanding requests to National Grid to make a public statement. They just haven't been answered yet, about a week. But I would expect them... They've been thus far pretty communicative. So I'm hoping that continues, because we love having them as a partner. And then the other two fronts, the SBA and MEMA, we've submitted all the information we have to them. It's on their desk. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that they provide whatever designation needs to happen to allow businesses that were negatively affected to get access to 0% interest loans for 12 months. So it's a really tangible win. And thank you for many of the Select Board members and community members that helped us network our way to those... Down that pathway, at least, it's going as well as can be. And then lastly, the private relief fund. It's been a very complex process. We're at kind of the five-yard line. It's looking like the Chamber of Commerce will be able to administer that fund as a grant. We're still laying out, ironing out, the very last specifics of that. And so we're not in a position to receive any private donations yet. But hopefully, more to come on that. But I just wanted to provide those updates and ask those questions to be answered in a timely manner, whenever is appropriate. And we'll do our best to, also, if we hear anything, share it with the public. We're happy to take any suggestions. Peter@nantucketchamber.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Okay, I'm going to go online. Megan Perry?
Thanks, Brooke. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Awesome. I was just wondering if you will be taking public comment during the CPC discussion?
Do you mean on the warrant, the CPC warrant article?
On your agenda tonight. Is there going to be any room for public comment on that?
Do you mean Capital Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, CPC or Capital Program?
Capital Program.
CPC means Community Preservation Committee, to me. Do you mean Capital Program Committee?
Yes, the one that's on your agenda tonight.
Yeah, I would take public comment during that discussion, yes.
Okay, wonderful. And then, I know my 30 seconds isn't up yet. A while back, I had asked where the three-minute rule came from for the Select Board, and I was sent information from a March meeting, where it was discussed for a little bit less than two minutes, but no public comment was allowed on whether or not a restriction on public comment could become a new policy and whatnot. I was actually looking for where the initial three-minute ruling came from for the Select Board. And then it got, I don't know, somehow made into a rule for every board on island. So I was just curious if you could... I know you won't answer any questions tonight, but if you could maybe let me know, and some other community members know, where the three-minute rule initially came from, not the two-minute discussion the Board had on it. I mean, nobody knows more than I do that you want to keep the public moving along and ask us to not talk too long. But just curious where that came from, and if there was ever any public discussion and public comment about limiting public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Megan. I'm going to take Veronica online, because she's been waiting, and then I'll go to the mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I also want to talk about the resumption of construction to the Vineyard Wind blades. And also kind of complain about the lack of transparency from the Select Board on the town's communications with B S E E. So at our November 13 Select Board meeting, I asked several questions, which during... On the website are not answered. And in the meantime, a lot of stuff has gone down. The first unanswered question was, what about all the real estate that the town owns through the land bank? Over $2 billion worth of real estate. And are you going to bring in appraisers to assess the increased risk on the town's property? Increased risk equals lower value. And I think you have fiduciary responsibility to do that now that 66 blades are going to be removed and be off of our shore. Blades moving all over the place. We know they break up into millions of little pieces. And then, what kind of pressure is being put on B S E E to ensure that the faulty blades are not installed? They seem to have 100% disregarded Nantucket. And certainly not answered any questions that we've been asking since July. And when are you guys going to make your conversations that you have with B S E E public? We've heard that the Chair is having conversations with B S E E. But, you know, if a conversation happens in a forest, does it really happen? And I think it's important that you hold people accountable and make them public. In answers to my November questions, we were assured in writing by the Select Board that you are working closely with the state and our federal legislators, and that our concerns would be heard. But instead, what happened was, a revised construction and operating plan was submitted on December 5. An addendum to it was submitted on December 19. The public of Nantucket was not permitted to comment on them, which is probably illegal. Was the town aware that those documents were being submitted? What's going on with ADLS? What's going on with financial assurance? The new documents make it clear, no additional financial assurance is being required. This project is likely to go bankrupt by the time they get all these blades back and forth across the ocean and up and down again. Where is Nantucket being protected? And finally, and I know, I don't know where I stand on my time, but I would just like to say, other communities fought. Their projects were delayed. Right now, for the next four years, there will be one area in the Northeast whose skyline is blighted, and it's Nantucket. And it's because of the complacency of our town, and it's really disturbing.
Veronica?
Thank you.
Here's your timer. Okay, thank you very much. If you could just state your name for the record for me? Oh, two seconds. I moved too fast.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Casey Kiley, and I operate Town and Queequeggs in the Core District. I'm here representing some of the restaurants that were affected by the events at Stroll this year. I'm just here to echo kind of along the lines of what Peter was saying. We really haven't heard a lot of communication from the town. And what you're doing to advocate for us, and what you're doing to help move this forward, what we're learning as we navigate this as small businesses is that documentation, information is really important. It's intrinsic to having some results, either from our personal insurances or the insurances we have for our companies, or from National Grid itself. Today, we did some. People have heard that they're claiming that there is no negligence, and therefore, they will not pay out, and they will not support us. But where is that report? And how do we get it? And how do we gain access to it? The Health Department was very helpful, and they did furnish us with documentation that they did request for our perishables to be destroyed, which was very helpful. But we also would request some documentation that we were asked to close for safety reasons from the town, because that would be really helpful as well. But we'd like to partner with you guys. And we'd like to know, how do we access the information we need? And how do we find out the information you have so that we can make an informed decision how to best move forward, not only for us, but for the dishwashers and cooks and servers and everyone that was impacted in our industry that day? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Meredith Lepre online?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so I just was following up. A few months ago, I requested information about the PFML that we approved in May. And you all said that it was the unions, except that, from what I'm understanding, you didn't really give the unions a fair deal. It wasn't really a negotiation. And since then, I've found out that the town of Shrewsbury actually approved a Family Paid Family Medical Leave Act for their town employees. So yahoo for them. But I also asked for an opinion about it from Town Council, and I never got that. So I'm just wondering if that's something that I could get. And I just think that it really is upsetting to me that we fought for this and that all of the people at Town Meeting, which I think it was the first night, so a lot of people, approved it. And now the town is... I don't know if it's Town Administration is just sort of kicking the can and deciding that they don't want to do it. So we're going to make it not palatable for the unions. We're just going to ignore it and not give the town employees the same rights that everybody in the private sector has. So I think that's pretty unfair. So I just would love an opinion, and I would like some information. Town of Shrewsbury figured it out. I think that we can too. Thanks.
Thanks, Meredith. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in public comment? I'm not seeing any hands up online, no one approaching the mic. So we'll move on from public comment. We do not have any new business tonight. Next up is minutes, payroll warrants, treasury warrants, and pending contracts. The pleasure of the Board. Questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, so Donna's not here yet, right? Okay, so I have a motion for approval seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those four passed unanimously. Okay. And next up is a joint meeting with the Capital Program Committee. Jill, do you have a quorum? Do you need to call your group to order?
John is online, but I can't see if Maggie Caroline is online. I know that...
You have, here. You've got John Kitchener. John Kitchener, that's it. Okay, so that's not a quorum for you guys. Okay, great, that's fine. Just if there were, we would need to call a meeting to order, so.
Your forum's open, because you're on it.
No, Dawn.
Oh, Dawn is.
Yeah, it's Dawn.
Brooke, do we need to call FinCom? Is there anybody online?
Oh, okay.
FinCom is... They're not panelists, they're attendees, so I don't think you...
Yeah.
Jeremy Blumer is online, and Joe Wright.
Okay, so that makes us a forum for FinCom.
Okay. Let's just cover it. Do you want to come to the microphone and call FinCom to order? Madam Chair?
I call to order the FinCom meeting within the Select Board meeting with the Capital Committee group.
Okay, we're covered. Okay. So where do we want to begin with this? Jill, are you going to come present your report to us? Or...
Yes, does that work?
Do a summary? Sure.
And do you want it on the screen? Or...
If you want to, that's fine. I'm really just going to summarize for you and take questions. So I'm not... You've got a big night.
I think we'll let her do her summary. And then if anyone has any specific questions or wants to look at a specific piece of it, we can put it up. Okay, great. Jill, if you could just pull the mic up a little, so you're talking right into it.
It's a little short, guys.
Yeah, it moves around. If you want.
Is this good?
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks for having me. Hello, and thanks for having us, all of us here tonight. I'm joined by our at-large member, Howard Matts, to present the 2026 capital requests. I want to start by thanking all the members of our committee. Vice Chair Pete Kizer, the Select Board Representative, Don Holgate, our at-large members, Kristy Kickham and Howard, our NPEDC Rep. John Kitchener. And our newest at-large member is Caroline Balzer. Everyone really brought a unique perspective, and I feel that we really drilled down into the requests in great detail in this process, thanks to each member's willingness to take a hard look at the requests. And if I could add, dedicate the time, because we met, I believe, more than 25 times. I also want to thank the Finance Director, Brian Turbit. His expertise is invaluable. And of course, thank you, Sue Carmel, who is the Assistant Finance Director and helps us on a daily basis, and whom without, we could not stay on track. She makes this process a lot more straightforward and has the answers at our fingertips. Again, Sue, God bless you. And I also want to thank the department heads and the town employees, who are all part of this process. And they are all part of this process. They are excellent at providing supplemental documentation, answering questions, and anything additional we might add, and they do it in a timely way. It goes a long way to keeping this process moving forward, and it is very appreciated. In that vein, I want to take a brief moment to applaud the town. And I can't applaud the town without singling out the town manager. I can't fully explain how well I think our town is run. And it's only from the Capcom perch that I have the opportunity to truly see that. We have excellent department heads. Everyone is willing to meet, call, give information, give honest feedback, and answer hard questions. Honestly, getting such quick responses continues to blow my mind. So with that, I'll just quickly go over the numbers. We had 60 requests this year totaling $274.8 million. Of the 60 requests, we recommended 53 projects totaling $166.5 million. So it was a big year. But the largest project we recommend was the DPW facility, which comes in at around $84 million, including some previous site and design money. Town Employee Housing is another big ticket at $14 million for 25 bedrooms. And the Tom Nevers Bike Path is $6.8 million. Those are the three debt exclusions we recommend in our report. Combine those projects, total about $104 million. And without those isolated requests that require a ballot vote, we stand at $64 million, which to me was interesting, because it's almost $16 million less than last year's requests. Taking, again, taking out the debt exclusions. This isn't my way of encouraging you to find more things to spend money on, but it is an indication that the department heads, town manager, and the finance director are doing their jobs, planning for capital in the long term. I know we all sigh when we see the big numbers and fear the collision project. But in terms of general fund and enterprise fund capital planning, the system is working. We have made a number of comments in the report encouraging ways the town can look forward to future requests. And we do have pointed comments about the Our Island Home and housing for town employees and other town employees, such as the airport. We believe we need a more coordinated effort town-wide among all departments and enterprise funds to come up with a way to price out residential building and development. Otherwise, the pricing is just guesswork for each department, and they all rely on different subcontractors to provide them with numbers. Streamlining this would be helpful in the future. As you can see from the rest of the report, it outlines the requests in detail, and we have some language to explain our process, as well as the process for funding the requests as allowed by the Commonwealth. With that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. And Howard is here, too.
Okay. Select Board, questions, comments? Malcolm?
Actually, I have a question on the methodology. Your algorithm and your prioritization system... Your algorithm and your prioritization system, could I see that or?
Oh, sure, we're happy to share it with you sometime. I don't know if we can pull up the rankings right now, but are you talking about the rankings of relative importance?
Yeah, just the methodology. If you could email that to me somehow?
We'd have to sit with you to show it to you. We all each kind of evaluate things individually. I'm happy to show you mine or I'm sure Brian can as well. But we answer specific questions. We look at all sorts of different questions and then each one of those questions has a value attached to it. Then we average those and then we discuss them. And that really creates the framework for discussion. It's been an incredible system, I think. Brooke, you.
And if it's out of a standard deviation, then it gets eliminated?
That's right, we do one standard deviation. But, you know, we still vote for things to go back into the report or take them out of the report at the both committee after we've discussed. It's really important that we do have that discussion, but it's also important that we have a point of reference to talk about things. Otherwise, you know, we'll, we'll talk about everything. I highly recommend it. I recommend the Select Board use that one for your, your planning. I think it's a really good system. I think other employees use it for other parts of their jobs too.
Yeah, I can say in my experience last year on Capcom, it's really interesting. It's, it's, it's hard to wrap your head around. You would probably understand it a thousand times quicker than I did as a non-statistical person. But the fact that each member objectives, like independently goes in and does this ranking system and then it's aggregated together and it's sort of, the difference between that and from seven people sitting around a room and arguing about what they like better is procedurally much more objective and much more efficient. And then as, as Jill pointed out, there's always room for persuading against the, the, the numbers that get spit out by the machine.
But it's a pretty simple system, actually.
Yeah.
Very efficient, simple system.
Yep, yep. And it, it does require a great, a lot of time, you know.
It does.
To, to read, evaluate and score. So I, I too want to express my appreciation.
I'd love to get your feedback on it too, because we're going to change it a little bit. Not the, not, the values of each question is kind of what changes because what's important to you all is what changes, right? They didn't use to evaluate things under climate change and now we do. So we have a value to that and a question about that.
Well, we should move on, but maybe in the next couple of weeks we'll get together.
I'd love that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to see it's still running with Stephen Wells not there. I was worried that once he left, that, you know, that, so.
No, no, I became a convert once I joined that committee and figured it out.
It's like, it's like, it's like sticky notes, except it's on math.
John, did you want to add something?
Yes, Madam Chair. It is, as you said, Madam Chair, it's a difficult one when you first, and this was my first year, so it was difficult to get my head around it in the beginning. But it is a good one, good process. The only thing I would add is that I do think from time to time, we should look at those components of what we're all, you know, evaluating. Because I think they should change over time. So that would be my only comment. And I think we may have a chance to look at that before we start the next cycle, so.
Yeah, thanks, John. Megan, is this the point in time when you wanted to ask a question? If you, if you would just raise your hand? Okay, I'm not seeing her hand raised. So typically, the board endorses, supports, approves the Capcom report. So I'd look for a motion from the board?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, thanks for all your work. I know, I know what a heavy lift it is, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up is a public hearing to consider amending Town Regulations, Chapter 375 Traffic. And I will open the public hearing and Libby, who's going to lead us through this?
So I think the chief maybe could do that unless, is Mike Burns online? And as the board knows, these amendments were reviewed with you at your December 18th meeting. And this is the subsequent public hearing that was agreed to. So you, you have already reviewed these particular amendments. But Mike, can you summarize, please?
John, can you mute, please?
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to share my screen here if that's all right.
Yes, please.
And I hope I'm sharing the appropriate one. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, the, the public hearing for changes to the parking regulations was approved at your December 18th meeting and advertised for public comments at this evening's meeting. Staff has recommended a variety of changes to the, the regulations as well as an enforcement plan to improve enforceability of abandoned vehicles and to ultimately implement parking management principles in the downtown area in alignment with the Select Board's strategic, strategic goal. There, okay. There are two sets of changes. The first set of changes are to the parking regulations, which is being discussed this evening. The regulations provide the legal framework for traveling on a public way and includes parking restrictions, permitting types and enforcement authority. The second set of changes are to the enforcement plan, which were presented at your December meeting and will be continued at a, at a future date. The enforcement plan specifies the seasonal strategy for how the regulations will be applied to each of the parking assets, which includes off-street municipal lots and on-street parking areas. Regarding changes to the parking regulations, staff recommends adding a definition and restrictions for municipal paid parking lots and a definition for a third-party parking management vendor who would assist the town with processing parking payments. Another change is aligning the maximum parking times for on- and off-street parking so that both are 96 hours or four days. This reduces the maximum parking time within a municipal lot from seven days to, to four days. The language that allows for future parking management is in 375-12L, which adds new language that, except as otherwise prohibited, a driver may acquire additional parking time exceeding the posted time restriction in time-restricted areas, provided that a fee has been paid to the town. For now, this regulation simply allows the ability for a driver to acquire additional time and the Chief of Police will not allow this ability to take effect until details have been acted on by, by you all, this board. Other changes include the ability for police to restrict overnight parking in municipal lots if, if a restriction is posted. A new parking permit has been added to the definitions that's specific to residents of wait drive so that parking along the public way can be restricted for their use or the use of the residents along wait drive. And there are a number of other edits to tighten up language to improve enforceability of the regulations and describe proper dates for regulatory timeframes rather than using common holiday names. So for this meeting, Madam Chair, again, changes to the enforcement plan we've presented at a future date. The requested action this evening is to, one, close the public hearing following public comment and to approve edits to the parking regulations that are recommended by staff. And as the Town Manager said, I can answer any questions and I believe the Chief of Police is there as well to help answer any questions.
Yes, so first questions from the board?
Megan?
Yep.
Yeah, one on page 79. What are the Select Board decision points? What are you referring to there, Mike?
Those were presented. Yes, those were presented about a year ago to this board and were, it's probably material for a future meeting. But, but those deal with issues such as what's the timeframe for charging for parking, say, in the downtown area? Is it a particular holiday, is it a time of day? What is the rate? There's lots of details involved with that, that we, it absolutely needed board input so that the parking management vendor as well as police had good direction on what the enforcement is around that. But that's, that's probably a topic for a future meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I've got a couple more. On page 61, the 96-hour rule in a lot and it said any spot. So can somebody drive the car out and then back in and park in another spot? Or can they move from one spot to another and then they're, they're okay? Or how does it?
I can't see the room, so I don't know if the chief is walking to the mic to answer the question, but I can just say that.
Coming, are you coming to save him?
You've summoned him, her, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is, I think the spirit of it is so that the car leaves a lot and is not there 96 hours. But from an enforceability standpoint, someone's going to be called to a lot, see in a particular spot and it would need to be really in the same spot, right? So if you went out and came back in, we wouldn't necessarily know that. That'd be a lot of investigative work to recognize that, wait a minute, that car's been in here because it was parked over there before. That would be a challenge.
Right, and the reason I'm asking, that one of the complaints from a couple areas this summer was some of the houses had six or eight cars with stickers. The, the family was only using one car, the rest were on the street all day, every day, all summer. And when the neighbors would say, would you please move them or do whatever, they'd say, we don't have to, I have a sticker. And it isn't in a lot, but it's, you know, it's sort of the entitlement of, you know, we don't need to park in our parking spaces because we have a, we have stickers. And so I, I just think it's, you know, so, so people are doing that type of thing is what I'm saying. And, and I would hope that we work to have less of that.
That type of scenario is the origin story for why we're looking at this 96-hour rule and asking for this change because it's really hard to address, but this will make it easier for us to address.
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
And if I might ask, the technology we have, the license plate readers, might that have like a GPS location? So you would know if you hit a plate that it was in the same, in the same parking lot or in the same geography? Not a question you need to answer tonight, but just a thought in terms of how technology might help answer that question, so.
Yeah, it certainly would in the future. And right now, we're really just looking at technology options for two fairgrounds. And then I think it's a good example of a good kind of pilot location. We can see how it works as a community and if we're liking it. And then talk about potential expansion in the future to other sorts of lots.
I'm sure she just answered my question about two fairgrounds being the on-ramp.
Yeah, okay, terrific. Malcolm, did you want to ask anything? Okay, this is a public comment, a public hearing. It's open for public comment. I see Meg Rulie's hand up. Go ahead, Meg, or as soon as you're muted, you can go ahead. Unmuted.
Hi, I'm, I live over on Tom's Way, which is near the Two Fairgrounds Road parking lot. And I don't know if this is the right hearing, but one of my concerns with introducing this, and I think it is a good idea, is that if people are going to have to pay and this is going to be monitored, are they going to start parking all along Tacoma Way and Amelia Drive? We already have an issue with people parking, especially at the end of Amelia Drive by those mailboxes. And it's all year round. It's not just in the summertime. So that was a concern I just wanted to bring because Amelia Drive is still quite, you know, a lot of people have off-street parking lots, but everybody, as Matt mentioned, likes to park on the streets still. And it just, it's really a travel hazard for both cars, bikes and even pedestrians. Thanks.
Thanks, Meg, appreciate the comment. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on the item, a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And again, thanks for all the work administratively that went in to get us here tonight, really. I know.
And I will, I'll answer Meg's real quick, is yeah, there will be more pressure in other areas. Anywhere that there isn't enforced parking or timed parking or, you know, that's, people are finding those spaces and parking. And so, you know, so this is why, you know, it's sort of why I have been pushing so hard for demand management and valuing on-street parking, valuing free parking. It's not free, we all pay for it. So I think that, you know, that's, you know, this is a really good step toward doing that, so.
We didn't talk about an effective date. In our previous discussions, we had talked about advertising this in next week's newspaper, the adoption of them and would that then be the effective date or?
We probably need to give some public note, some additional outreach for an effective date. So maybe something more like March 1st.
Okay.
Should I work with the chief and you on that? To make sure that, that the timeframe works?
Yeah, I mean, that should be, give people plenty of notice that things are going to be changing. We can get some outreach out. I mean, we, we have a shortage of public outreach resources right now. So we'll have to figure that out, but.
Can we put some flyers underneath?
Do you need a formal motion on an effective data set?
Maybe you could leave it to Town Admin to land on a, on a date, potentially March 1st. But we'll just figure out what works best with getting, as soon as possible, with getting the necessary outreach out.
Okay, terrific, great. Thanks, Erica, for bringing that up. Okay, next up is review discussion and Select Board adoption of the May 3rd, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, an election warrant. And we have called out two specific items to focus on initially tonight, actually three. So the first is regarding Chapter 58 of the Town Code with relation to car rental agencies and peer-to-peer car sharing. And last week, we, I think we successfully left the discussion with, with a request to Town Council to come up with a, a version, one version for us to look at. And my understanding is that the, the, the board wanted to look at something that made one peer-to-peer car at any given address permissible in a different way from multiple vehicles registered to an address. And in my vernacular, which is not legal, that you sort of, when you've got more than one, you cross over into that definition of a car rental agency and, and that medallions would be required. I think in my reading of it, Town Council Brian Riley is here. And Brian, do you want to just run through and describe if, if, if I'm correct and that's what you tried to do and then how you did it?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Amy Baxter and I put our heads together on this and went over what we thought the, the direction from the board last time was. And so if you see what we sent, basically what's in red would be new. And so we did, you know, refer to peer-to-peer car sharing as within the definition of rental agency unless it's just one personal vehicle per address. And we put in a.
What page, which one are we on? There was one on page 129 and one on 167? I didn't, which one are we working off of from our packet? I was, I'm confused.
So what you have in your packet, if you go to the bookmarks, you've got your draft warrant and then it says, Draft Amendments to Chapter 58. It's at the end of the warrant.
So it's a very end, one's page 170, it's 170, 67?
167.
Okay, all right, so there we go. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're all on the same page?
And I'm not sure that that's what I agreed to, but I, now I can, now I know what we're doing and then we can talk.
Okay, so I think what I, what I hoped we would do is have a proposal to talk about rather than multiple things at once, so that we can sort of move off of a single proposal if we want to, if we agree. So, sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine. We added a definition of peer-to-peer car sharing, which I borrowed from one of the small handful of bills that's in the General Court right now. We also added that the Select Board could, by regulation, kind of expand on that if, if this bylaw, if these bylaw amendments are approved by Town Meeting. Wouldn't necessarily have to have everything in the bylaw itself. As I talked about last week, the Select Board has authority to, to adopt regulations concerning uses of public ways and whatnot. Then, okay. Made some slight changes. Actually, we're able to get rid of one subsection from 58-3 by adding what it said into 58-2 about the stickers that the vehicles have to have on them. Then there was some language of trying to get, Amy may be able to speak more to this knowing the, the history of the, and the problems with the medallion system. But to try to make it more clear that, you know, if a, if a. but to try to make it more clear that, you know, if a, if a car rental agency, and this is more applicable to kind of classic car rental agencies, if they are getting a lot of medallions and they're just not, they're not being used, they're not attached to a vehicle, you know, that's a problem. We wanted to give the select board some authority to try and prevent that practice, to the extent that's been going on. And then to allow the select board, again, by regulation is what we're thinking now, the select board to come up with a, a system of unused surplus medallions, how that's going to work. Are we going to have a waiting list similar to, you know, some other bylaws? And also, again, to give the select board a little more obvious authority, we wanted to say that, that these rental licenses, you know, rental agency licenses, are not just transferable from one party to another. You need to go through and get the select board to, you know, even if it's sort of pro forma, at least the select board, you know, will understand what's happening to these medallions, and they're not kind of circulating between parties on the side without us knowing about it. I don't know if, if Amy wants to add anything to that.
May I, Madam Chair, comment?
Absolutely, absolutely, Amy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think Brian did a good job of going over what, what we put through here. We took the, the goal here throughout has been to take a look at this bylaw. How do we clean it up? How do we look at the system and clean up the medallions? Meaning, you know, identify unused medallions? Are there places that we can go in and, and kind of clean that up? And then modernize this, if, if you will, this bylaw to address what's going on today in technology? So I believe the way to do that was to put more of the discretion in the hands of the select board outside of having to go to town meeting every time we need to make a change. So I think, as you mentioned, we, I, I took out a couple of things. I took out the commercially zoned location to remove zoning from any discussion here, so that we identified what an agency is, either fixed location or through an internet-based operation, and then put in the definition of one personal vehicle per address, as we mentioned. Also, in, by kind of switching the transferability, which currently reads as if the transferability is with the medallion, where it should be really is in an agency license, such as it is in a restaurant license or some other license where the business is transferred with approval of select board. The medallion system in the bylaw cap should be under management of the select board, and we wanted to provide more active management on an annual basis for the select board to review. So as we discuss here and talk about transferring, that's what that means. Also, I believe we wanted to put in discussion of process, but allude to the process as something from time to time the select board may manage and come up with a process to reallocate any unused or excess medallions as they feel is warranted. So that language is in there to give you more active management and to allow for a process to be established outside of town meeting. But of course, in a public hearing, it will still be public, but outside of a town meeting. And then also, I added in there, as we discussed, keeping the 700 limit, but also possibly establishing a pool of medallions. I set it at 50, that the select board can use at its discretion to address possible fluctuations in, in the market, in the business, current businesses requesting additional medallions in the year when, you know, the need becomes that they need more for that year. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility, again, to deal with fluctuating conditions in the market. So I believe those are all the things that we dealt with, so any questions?
Matt?
My first is, I don't think this is what we agreed on. So, so just, so I'm clear, I don't think, I think this is the proposal that was on the table that I thought we modified. I thought that we were asking for the peer-to-peer to be under the cap, under the 700 or the 800, 140 we took back. I thought they were all going to be counted. I didn't think that there would be a, that the peer-to-peer would be excluded and not even need a lot, need a sticker on it, which it seems to be the case here, that there's no sticker on it. If there's no sticker, how do we even know? How do we know what's a peer-to-peer and what's not? We talk about, oh, this is going to help us, you know, manage this and, and take care of this. Well, how can we if we don't even know who's, who's a rental car and who's not? Who's a Turo or a rental car and not? This is not at all what I thought we were doing, so.
So as far as the stickers are concerned, I believe the way this is written, it allows us to create a system for stickering peer-to-peer, the one per household. So it takes it out of Chapter 58 and gives the board the, the ability to establish a sticker system for the peer-to-peer. Am I correct, Brian?
Well, that was, that was our understanding, Madam Chair. We thought the consensus was that this would not, the bylaw would not try to regulate a single address with one personal vehicle that they're using, Turo or anybody else. But more than that would be, would fall within the rental agency definition and therefore be subject to the medallion system.
Okay, so, so I guess my question is, if we go with the decision to allow one per household, do we have the capacity, as the bylaw is drafted now, to add a system of requiring application and stickering of the peer-to-peer, single car per households?
May I answer that, Madam Chair?
Sure.
So like Brian said, that was our understanding, first of all, to create the definition. So we create a definition of what an agency is, which would be more than one personal vehicle in this instance. I think we need to, yes, we can, this gives us the ability to create that process outside of the bylaw. I think it's going to require more discussion, yes, but we need to, we don't have, we have the eight now that we can probably deal with right now. But by the time this goes through, if it does by the end of the year, we would have to go through a process to determine if we can have more under that cap. So they would be included. Anyone with more than two cars would be included under that cap and in the medallion system. So that would be brought into the system, should we have that, those medallions. But we would have to set one, that process, and determine if it is a lottery, how many medallions would be given to a new, you know, a new group, or would be one per, that sort of situation would be determined outside of the bylaw.
Okay, so, so that's a, that's a little step aside from, from what I was trying to ask, which was, we've defined a, a car rental agency as, as having two or more vehicles, right? So that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
And they require medallions. And we've defined the, the, the peer-to-peer, which is the single per address, right? I think what, what I'm hearing Matt trying to, trying to figure out is, if we do this, we're allowing one per address with no way to count them and ident, and have them identifiable as being allowed single per address, peer-to-peer. And so we had talked, Amy, early on about setting up a separate stickering system so that if you're driving, if, if, if you are wanting to do peer-to-peer and one per address, that you have to have a sticker, so that's a way of being able to see in a driveway whether there's more than one or not, identifying those allowed use under the, under the single per household or per residency. Does that make sense? This is really complicated, and I want to make sure my words are clear.
Yeah, no, and I apologize if I'm not answering it correctly, but yes, we can, we can certainly pursue that. We're looking for technology solutions to help us if, if that gets added on here. But I don't believe that a sticker system and that would have to be added to this bylaw. I think what we want to do is establish, you know, obviously still waiting out any sort of legislation at state level, but add what a definition of an agency is. So it would be separate from a medallion system, it may be a sticker, but one per, if we want to do a registration-type system, we can do that. It would be different color or something, but I believe that can be done outside the bylaw. I didn't want to messy up the bylaw with a lot of that. We're trying to put in here that we could set up a process for allocating these outside the bylaw. But no, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a medallion because they're not an agency. If it's just one vehicle, that would be a registration system.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
I'm back still at the sticker, it's, here's how it's written. Each sticker, this first part's referring to the, to the agency sticker, shall recite the registration number of the vehicle to which it is affixed. A license pursuant to this section in Chapter 58 shall not be required for peer-to-peer car sharing. So that's how it's written now, which is why it's, you know, I'm, I was asking the question. If we do this, I'm trying, I'll try to stay big level. If we do this, right now, the way we are rental agency, it isn't really an agency, it's any rental car. It's how, the way it's defined now, they're basically saying, any rental car on Nantucket, you know, has to have a medallion. If we put this in, we are undoing that limitation. We are saying, no, you can, you can have one for every house. Well, we have 10,000 houses, we can have 10,000 of these. You know, if people, we, we won't, there'll be less than that, but we'll have a lot of them. And we are undoing something that was put in place for a specific reason. So I'm opposed to these changes. I thought that we were fitting, and I, and I think we should be finding a way for the 100 or two people that are doing it. I think the rental agencies would be willing to give back 140 if we talk to them and ask them, is my guess. And my, and if we added another 50 or so, we could put those within the cap and, and track everybody. I thought that's where we were going. If we're going this way, I am adamantly opposed, and I won't have to talk anymore tonight.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Malcolm?
I will support anything that maintains the individual being able to rent cars, or a car, or two cars, at least one car. I will support that. So I, at first, I like this, but my colleague here is, probably should have been a lawyer. I understand what he's saying. So we, we really haven't capped it.
Well, if you're saying, if you're saying you, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, if you're saying that you, you support something that allows people to rent one or two, then you should support this.
Yes, but I want to be able to, I want the total number of cars to be relatively fixed.
Well, then you're not going to be, if you support this, you will not.
No, I said I don't support this as it is.
Hey, hey, hang on, hang on, okay.
I understand your point.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, all right, so Tom, did you want to comment?
I guess I would just say that from our discussion last week and where this comes from, this is pretty close to what I thought we were getting towards, if we're going to do this at all. And maybe now's not the time, I don't know. Let's, we'll see where we get in this conversation. But to me, this kind of divides the line between usage for somebody who's trying to earn some extra money and to make a life here, and what is in effect a commercial business. And so if Amy's office and the chief's office and town admin and the board's okay with it, this makes sense to me. But maybe now's not the time, and we'll see where we get in the discussion.
So the way I see this playing out is, we have defined a family turoing their private vehicle or maybe having one extra vehicle, one per address. And this is, you know, partly for me in response to what I'm hearing from the community of, of families who are doing this, to pay the lease payment on their vehicle or to, you know, it's just, it just takes away the sting of life on Nantucket in a small way. As to the number, to my mind, there's absolutely no reason why we can't look at the number of medallions in what would be a newly defined definition of a rental car business, right? Including anyone using a platform that has more than one vehicle that needs a medallion. We don't have to issue 700 medallions to that side of this business of car rentals on Nantucket. We know there are unused medallions, we're looking for a way to retrieve them. I'm saying, if, the reason I asked Amy about the sticker system because it would be invaluable to have a way of counting the number of families who are, who's rental for extra income, we're trying to protect in some small way. So requiring them to apply and get a sticker to put on the back of their car allows us to count. So now we have a count of how many of those are and how many there are under the official car rental business model. And then we have two numbers we can add together, and we can change the cap of the medallions in accordance to the number of Turo stickers we issue, and we can talk about the whole number. So, but, but what I, what I'm trying to avoid is forcing someone who's just trying to pay for their kid's ice skating lessons through going through the process of having to apply for and hang on a waiting list for a medallion. That's my, that's my logic here.
Yeah, so let me, let me poke a hole in your logic then, is, then you, if you're capping it, the person that comes in later that wants to pay for their kid's skating lessons is, how are they, are they going to just get it because they have one? You haven't capped it. If you, you're either going to, you can't have both, you can't have it both ways.
Well, we can then look at it and see what the numbers are, right?
But, but if, but this is one of those let the horse out of the barn articles. You know, do we start slowly and let it out slowly? Or do we open the barn door and then try to bring the horse back in later? And I, my, my philosophy would be, it's tight now, let's open it slowly. Let's open it for the 100 people who are doing it now, let's find a way to do that. Let's not open it up and then try to pull it back, because it's going to be near impossible to pull back later. You know, we will have given that right to every house on Nantucket, you know, every apartment, every, you know, every room, and every, every player on the island can have one car that they're renting on Turo now, if we pass this. And town meeting's going to push to pass it because a lot of people are making money with it. But so I, I just think that this is, you know, this is not good policy, and it's undoing what was good policy for 35 years.
So Matt, if I might ask you a question, how would you achieve it? Would you, how, logistically, how would you achieve getting permission to households who are periodically renting an extra, their, their vehicle?
I would ask them to be on a list. I'd ask, I'd find, I'd ask the, the rental car companies to, if there's 140, I'd ask them to give their 140 back. If we had to add 50 or 100, so we had 250 to give out now, I would do that, because that's about how many we had. If it were up to me, I would have done this three years ago, when there were 30 or 100, not now when there's 300, but that's okay. And I would have about 250 now, so my total would be 800, 850, and it would be capped. And then people that wanted to come in later would have to, you would have to be on a list to come in later for a single one, and we'd know when they came in and got on the list. And then we had one open up, they would get it. I would do something like that so that we weren't completely, you know, we wouldn't, weren't completely letting everyone do it. I, I think our traffic is too bad, Old South Road, I can just picture this. I, and I know some of the people are doing it, I can just picture this, you know, from some of the areas off of Old South. We'll have, it'll be gridlock everywhere. I just think we are, anyway, I've said it before, you guys know. So I would, so you're asking how I would do it? I would do it within a cap of like 800. I'd ask, I'd talk to the rental car guys and ask them to give medallions back. I'd have, I'd have a sticker on all of them. I wouldn't have two tiers of it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the definition of peer-to-peer because in this, in here, because then when they overturn it to state, then they'll say, see, there's nothing to do. And well, if, you know, if they, if those venture companies give enough money to the state, they're going to overturn it and make it more sharing. And I feel bad for the rental car companies and the people that have done it, because they're being undermined now. I feel bad for the airport, they're being undermined now. And, and, and so I think that we've got, you know, and I, and I think we can set up something that the people who are doing it now, find a way to let them do it, but don't let it become, you know, what I think, where I think we're going to head if we do it, so.
Okay, so Malcolm?
I just have, so, that's good, but what happens when we cap it and we open it? And people are going to rush to get one and may not use it, just like I know people register. Just like I know people registering for short-term rentals and may not use it, so.
So.
How do we manage that?
If I might, we're not going to solve this tonight, and we need to adopt a warrant. So the, I think the, the question is, if we, if we're not ready to propose, clearly we're not, haven't thought this, or haven't vetted this out thoroughly, because we're still quite in disagreement, and I'm not willing at this point to push this personally to, to an up or down vote. Should we not amend, should we not keep, put this in the warrant as it's written? The impact of, and, and I might take public comments, just don't want to interject, but it depends on where we're headed here. If we leave it alone, right, we have a situation where it's somewhat maybe legally unclear or in practice unclear. And what is the expectation? We leave the community if we delay this until fall town meeting, and what impact on the police department and enforcement and complaints? We have a season between now and then. So that would be the question. If we're not ready to act tonight, what are the consequences of inaction? We just keep going the way we've been going?
Well, Madam Chair, if we don't act, will, will we resolve anything by the fall? Or we just keep going around in circles?
I actually don't think, I think there's a way to do this with some more discussion, not on a Wednesday night, the night we're supposed to be adopting. I think we're, we're getting closer, but I'm not close enough for me to feel like we could rewrite it or direct it to be rewritten. So, I don't know. Pleasure of the board.
And I think, yeah, I, I think there's, how do I say it? Yeah, I think we're close. I think it could, I think it could be written in a way that protects the current people. I do worry about people feeling, well, I did it and I'm grandfathered. I, you know, I had four cars. I should still have four cars. I had, I just added two more. I have, I have two more that I have to pay for. I mean, that's what we're going to, you know, and, and I think that's what we're going to be hearing, you know? We're going to hear from the one, people with one car, but there's a lot that are kind of doing other things. And I think that's, it's sort of two, three tiers. There's rental car companies, there's people who are acting like small rental car companies, and then there are people with truly one car. A lot of them have bought a second car, but, you know, so they can have a rental car and still be able to drive themselves, but, you know, it's not like they're sharing their car and not using their own car, a lot of them. And so that, you know, I think that there's a, you know, you've got sort of three tiers. And I think they all should be under the cap, you know? Or under a cap that's, that's enforceable and doesn't have a chance of being overturned by the state because we wrote it wrong.
Okay. So if I might ask Mr. Riley, as the bylaw stands now, if it's unamended, would individuals renting their car through turo be subject, would they be considered a rental car agency under the current writing of chapter 58?
Well, I guess I have two, two points to make on that. One, certainly arguably they would be, because the definition now is a, a person or business or corporation engaged in the business of renting, leasing, or keeping for rent any motor vehicle. So you could certainly make a straight-faced argument that that would already cover somebody who's using this peer-to-peer platform with, with one or two cars. So I think that's, and, but my, my second point, and I don't want to, I know the chief is there, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but the, the concern we've had ever since this issue came up, you know, some months ago, is it doesn't, for, for someone that, let's say, who's using turo, they have one car, they're, they're going through that website to make a rental, and they meet the person coming off the boat, and the person takes the car for however many days, and they meet up again. It just seems virtually unenforceable to, you know, for the police or anybody else right now to be able to monitor that. You know, the, I think the, the thought was maybe if we make these sort of changes, we might be able to move a little closer to enforceable, but I just, I, I don't think it's enforceable now, even if we assume that everybody who's renting a, a car even through peer-to-peer is subject to the bylaw. I think that's kind of the, kind of the, the big problem. The way it is now, and, and that's, and I, I do agree with the chair's comments that, you know, maybe this doesn't solve everything right now, but we can still, you know, we can still see what else we come up with.
So, Tom?
Attorney Riley, would you agree that this situation is semi-similar to what Uber and Lyft happened, and the state eventually gave guidance on through the legislative process? That, that turo's in a similar situation where municipalities, with what they can and can't enforce?
Yeah, well, I mean, basically, I, I think that's accurate. And, and there are, you know, there are some bills to do it. I know they, they seem to be more concerned with how the insurance works, but the fact that there are already multiple bills filed tells me that they may, at, at some point, we, we may get some legislation on this. And, you know, I, I don't, with the, with the Uber and Lyft, you know, they were hearing, the legislature was hearing a lot from the taxi businesses. I don't know if they're hearing the same thing. I mean, I assume they would be, from Hertz and, and the other, you know, big rental car companies all across the state that are losing business to turo and the like. So I, I do expect something will happen at some point. I just, I have no idea at the moment how, how much, you know, force there is behind getting these bills through. But I do think the issues are very, very similar.
Thank you, Malcolm.
If we do adopt this, it defines those individuals who are renting multiple cars, and it protects the citizen who's doing it individually. And it may give us time to sort that out. It would not make my colleague necessarily happy, but it gives us a period of time to define that peer-to-peer, and we may have state guidance. This would protect an individual who is renting their car, would no longer be technically illegal. Just a thought.
We have articles, under, article 64 on page 129 is, is clear, is cleaning it up and giving us the ability, it's not making it legal. It's, it would be in the gray area. It's, I don't think it's a gray area, but some people, it's in the area that some people claim is gray. I don't think it's gray at all. But it says this, it, it adds that this definition shall include any individual renting a motor vehicle via peer-to-peer. So it adds, it adds that into rental agency, just to clarify. You know, I don't even think that that's necessary, and that might even weaken it, because then when the state changes it, you know, we couldn't argue that we've got a law, you know, a pre-existing law you can't change on us, which was what it would be, what I argue, would argue. And then at the end, it says that we can take back the medallions, and we can give them out, and et cetera, et cetera. So it makes that part very clear, you know? So we could, we could go that route. This is page 129.
So Matt, that's exactly where my brain was going, that we, that we, if we delay on opening up the door to peer-to-peer by individuals, but we proceed with the ability to, to clarify the ability to take back unused medallions, and then we take another bite at this question of whether to include individuals renting one car and address as needing a medallion, or as a separate pool under a different sticker system at a later date. It does leave things unenforceable in some ways in the meantime, but it, it speaks to Matt's desire not to open up the gate without the ability to rein it in at a later date. And.
And I would argue, make it, if we make these changes, it'll be unenforceable forever because it'll be such a wide-open gate, you know? I, I think that what we're doing is going to make it completely unenforceable. Right now, it's 200 or 300.
Well, we don't really know how many it is. Then that's the problem. I've heard lots of numbers.
We had a list that was handed to us. We could, we could put a thing in and say, you have to have your name in by this date to be, you know, to be considered for a license, and we'd, we'd know how many there were immediately, or how many people wanted to do it. You know, you'd find out really quickly, but.
Madam Chair?
Yeah. Tom?
I, I think, unless I got it wrong, I basically just heard Attorney Riley say that this was very difficult, this would be very difficult to enforce under chapter 58, like. So that, and that we don't have a full board tonight, and we have another rest of the warrant, I, I might suggest we might want to proceed the way you were, and Matt were just having a back-and-forth on with the other tracks, and see how it pans out later.
Okay. So to be very specific, it would be keeping the part, clarifying the language on the expirate, you know, unused medallions being returned to the select board for distribution, leaving the current cap at 700, and keeping the bylaw the same, that peer-to-peer is subject to the bylaw and considered, and technically requires a medallion. And maybe then we, Amy, we, we say that there will be a process to issue recovered medallions and ask people to sign up, and that way, we would quantify the number of individuals who are interested in getting a medallion. And then we can evaluate the numbers and, and redefine the peer-to-peer and propose it at special town meeting, or is that two, is this two home rule petitions?
I, I am, I'm a little lost as to what you want to do. So we have the, the draft, the article that was in the draft warrant, which Matt just referenced, article 64. That is not the final number. That's just what was in last year's warrant.
Yes.
We have the article that Brian and Amy worked to accommodate what the board talked about last week, which now is seemingly not exactly what is wanted. So just to, I, I don't, are you talking about keeping the 60, keeping the article from last year in as?
No, I'm working, I'm working from article 58, Matt, or the draft from Amy and Mr. Riley. Matt, where are you?
Yeah, I'm working from the article from last year, taking the peer-to-peer.
Okay, so we're talking apples and oranges. My apologies, everybody, we are going around in circles a little. I, I need some direction from the board. I don't know what, I'm, I'm stumped at this point.
It seems to me that.
Mic on.
The priority, before we can actually do anything, is recover the medallions that are not being used. That should be our priority. Then we will have something that we can debate about how to distribute.
So that language is in the article from last year. That was the main purpose of last year's warrant article. I'm going to, Erica can go to it in the warrant, but I'm just going to quickly say, rental vehicle medallions are, this was the proposed language from last year that is not in the bylaw right now. This was the language meant to capture unused medallions. Medallions are intended to be kept in use by licensed rental agencies. A current license holder applying for a renewal license shall file a renewal application by October 1st. Such renewal application shall include a copy of the registration, blah, blah, blah. After providing a hearing, if, if the town obtains information suggesting that a rental agency is holding one or more rental vehicle medallions that are not in use, the select board may conduct a hearing on the issue after providing written notice, after providing a hearing, they may take such action and limit or revoke or suspend one or more medallions, and then you can reissue them. That, that is basically what that says. Sounds like that's one of the main things that you want to do. So maybe keep that in. The other thing it sounds like people want to do is ensure that peer-to-peer car shares are considered rental agencies and are defined as such. That was another thing that was in last year's article. It specifically says, this definition shall include any individual renting a motor vehicle via a motor vehicle sharing or peer-to-peer vehicle sharing business. So the one thing that maybe, I don't know if there's more than one thing that isn't in here, is this cap. This article from last year retains the cap of 700. That didn't change. So that cap would, that's the cap. So if this article were to pass and be approved by the attorney general, then these unused medallions, I think I've heard Amy say there's between 100 and 140, something like that, those would possibly theoretically go to the peer-to-peer people, but there would be an ult, there's an ultimate cap. Last week, there was discussion about a cap for each category. The established, you know, what we consider a rental car business versus the peer-to-peer car sharing, and I, we know there's something in between that, that people have turned into more of a business, not so much of a little side thing to make some extra money. But that would, those would also be subject to this bylaw from last year, which did not pass. It was tabled, actually, shouldn't say it didn't pass.
And politically, if we come back with this without explaining how we're going to, you know, release 140 and when, I think we'll have a hard time. You know, if we politically go back and say, yeah, we've had a whole year, and we brought the same thing again, you know, this is, you know, we, we, I think we'd have a hard time. You know, I think people want, that are doing it want to be told, want to know, you know, am I going to get it? And when will I know? And how am I going to do it? You know, so we still, that's the, so, so that's the part that we say, yeah, we're close. We have to figure that part out. That's the part that.
I don't think that's, town council, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure that's figure-outable right at the moment, because that's not the way it's working right now. If last year's bylaw were adopted, and again, approved through all the appropriate channels, there would be a system that would be developed to deal with the unused rental vehicles and rental vehicle medallions, and the board would be able to, at its discretion, issue them.
So if, Matt, you had, you had, the one piece, so I could live with this, with the commitment to, to develop a system for reallocating recovered medallions, and maybe what we should do is put the capacity to up the limit, total limit. If we keep them under the medallion system, up the total limit, not by 50, but by another 100, to a total of 800. So it gives us some room to accommodate the current, what we think the current number of people doing turo, that individual car turo.
That would be, that completely makes sense.
Okay.
You know, that, that I'm fine with.
All right. See, I knew we were close.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to me as well. In the article, potential article that Attorney Riley and Amy worked on, there's some other smaller definitions that they worked on and tightened up. If those aren't in article 64, I think those should go in as well, because everything else, besides the big things that we're talking about, like the stickers, those all seem like reasonable changes as well.
Yep, specifically?
Specifically, like if it's, I, I don't know the every in and out of article 64, but 58 dash four, non-transferability, and there's a bunch of other little cha, I, I just haven't looked at article 64 and exactly reconciled the changes between the two. But I, I was focusing on this article. But I was focusing on this article, preparing for the meeting, and based on our discussion, if the sticker and the peer-to-peer definition's not going to work, the rest of it seems to me like a lot of, we have a vast agreement over the rest of it.
Yeah. Okay, so when I thought we were going to put this on hold, I was not going to take public comments, but I am going to, because I want to hear Stephen Cohen.
Do you have the timer on for this?
Yeah, I am going to set a three-minute timer here, just because we're trying to move this along, so be concise.
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm going to skip all the reasoning that I have and just go right to my recommendation in that time limit. I think the board is heading in the right direction, but I think what you should be doing is setting up a system to take back those medallions and to prevent transferability of them. But then you should also exempt peer-to-peer and use from auto, and just set up, use your language to create, to authorize the select board to create regulations for peer-to-peer. And that, and if you do those two things, you will, you know, you don't have to go to town meeting. When you figure out what the issues are and how you want to deal with them, you will have authorized yourself to issue those regulations at that point. So that's my recommendation to the board. Adopt the transferability and the take back the medallions, but exempt peer-to-peer and just authorize yourself to issue regulations. And then you could put limits in or whatever you want later, once we've had a chance to go through this with the airport and the town and the police department and figure it out. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. I'm going to take Daniela Kozik on line. You need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Daniela Kozik, and most of you know me. I'm Assistant GM of Nantucket Hotel, and I'm doing Turo for a couple of years, only with two and now with the three vehicles, my entire household. As we talked before, and Jonathan and all of us, this really helps us a lot. And even with the three vehicles, that helps us pay only, in my case, half of my rent per year. But I'm not going to talk about this now. My question is, when we, if we're going to get a chance to buy medallions, are we going to have priority people who live year-round? I mean, I am an immigrant, but I lived on Nantucket for 12 years, year-round, full-time, and how confident we can be that medallions won't be sold to another rent-a-car company on island? So that's my question. So we don't get somebody from off-island, and we don't get another multinational company, rent-a-car company, buying those medallions. Thank you.
Yep. In answer to that, those medallions are assigned to a specific vehicle. So they're issued to an individual and assigned to a specific vehicle. So they're not transferable in that way, is how we would have this set up, is my understanding. They would not be transferable. That's correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rob Juketti, I think, just having listened to this for two weeks, just the thought that comes to me is that Turo really is a rental car agency, right? So they've outsourced the ownership of the assets, and they've outsourced their customer service, but they really are behaving as an agency. So if they're a vendor that's making money on this, why aren't we putting, we know we're going to clawback medallions, you guys are talking about that, or opening some up, whatever it is, 50 or 100. Put the onus on them to manage it and only allow, right? They have geo-fencing, they know how many cars are available on Nantucket. Let them only have so many active at a time, and let them control it, right? Because the risk, I think, if you create this new category of peer-to-peer, it's great for the people who are using a service like Turo that's collecting tax and making sure people get paid, but now if you go get a medallion, you can operate as a business independent of going through Turo, right? So how are you going to ensure any compliance, right? And then you have, you know, one neck to choke, or whatever the expression is there, right, if there's a problem with it. So just my two cents, they're a vendor, they're making money on it, you can put some onus on them to deal with it and not create this, you know, new sea of people renting cars individually. So, thank you.
Interesting.
That is an interesting thought.
Comment.
I don't think they would either, but...
Yeah. I would defer to Town Council, maybe, I mean, the thing is, there are, there's more than one peer-to-peer platform, and how we would manage how many medallions go to what platform, I don't know. I just think it's a, I don't want to get into debate, Rob. So John Pertin on line?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm John Pertin. I'm counsel.
Mr. Pertin, we can barely hear you. Can you speak up or get closer to your mic?
Yes, is this better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm counsel for Affordable Car Rental in Nantucket, Rent-A-Car. I just wanted to highlight a few concerns of the existing car rental companies that I represent. We are pretty much aligned with most of the concerns that Matt Fee has articulated, so I won't dwell on them extensively. We do think it's important to keep peer-to-peer under the bylaw. To the extent that the bylaw, one of the main purposes of the bylaw was to reduce traffic. When you allow peer-to-peer sort of a pass, those are not cars that, you know, residents would use to go to the grocery store or, you know, pick up somebody at the ferry. Those would be used by people, you know, who are vacationing or what, to drive to the beaches, to, there's a lot more mileage, a lot more traffic, a lot more, they're not living in the parking lot of a residence, they're, they're living in the parking lots all over town and on the streets. I would suggest that that would exacerbate the very problem you're trying to correct. I also just asked the board to consider the danger of having two classes of renters, those who have been paying excise taxes and playing by the rules, and those who now are sort of given almost carte blanche on one car. You know, one car's not a big deal, but to Mike, to Matt Fee's point, when you have 10,000 houses, even if 500 of them are doing this, that's 500 more rental cars that are not subject to the protections that this board and its predecessors wisely put into effect. And then as far as raising the cap from 700 to 750, I would just like to suggest to the board that it's, it's a slippery slope. You go up 50 now, and maybe that's fine, but then if you then open it to peer-to-peer, it's 750 plus potentially hundreds of others, and that, that number grows exponentially. Under the bylaw, you do have the ability to clawback, and I guess I would just, to sort of echo Mr. Fee's comments, I'd move very cautiously here, because it's the law of unintended consequences. My sense is, the board and the town is grappling in good faith with a situation, but the peer-to-peer part of this, you know, it's, it's very dangerous. So I'd urge you to not include them, excuse me, to include them as a rental. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else want to try to summarize where we're at? What I, what I hear is that last, the article we proposed last year with the clarifying definitions that Town Council pulled from the general court on just cleaning up definitions, but not, and then also cleaning up the non-transferability and the ability to clawback medallions, and then, but keeping peer-to-peer under the medallion system, and that we would be, I mean, we've already talked about waitlists, and we've already talked about a system for this already. So, I mean, I think even between now and, well, I don't want to promise anything, but we could have a, potentially a proposed framework for how those medallions, once they were retrieved, would be allocated to peer-to-peer users. And then maybe the other thing would be to give us permission to increase the total number under the medallion system, so that we are not leaving...
To 100, right, to 800 or something?
As we know the numbers, we're not, we're not leaving some people out.
The option, but we don't have to.
Right, right. It's permission to do without a commitment to do.
Transfer back peer-to-peer option base.
Okay, so are the people who are going to do the final draft clear?
No.
Not clear?
I'm, can, we need a base, so are we...
Article 64.
Okay. So you're, say the issues.
Okay.
The issues are that you want to be able to reissue unused medallions.
Correct.
Number one.
Yep.
Okay, that is, do you all agree that is in the article already?
Yep.
No changes there?
Yep.
Okay. You want peer-to-peer car shares to be considered very specifically rental agencies. That language is in there.
Okay.
No matter the number?
Well, I'm not at the number yet.
What I'm saying is that the revised one that we got had, I think, clearer language than 64. I would leave it to Town Council to determine whether the updated description of that is necessary or not versus 64.
And then, I am not, okay, transferability. Section 58-3D indicates that RVMs are transferable with or without consideration, so Town Council could quickly come up with some language that changes that to...
Well, it would be this language here in the new, it would be C.
So we would adopt Section C of the more current proposal, in lieu of that, to replace the transferability language.
Okay. And then I don't really know what you're trying to do with the cap.
So the language, again, in Section B of the draft that's redlined, it is adopting that paragraph and changing it from the distribution of up to 100 additional medallions.
All right.
At the discretion of the select board.
So, let's go over to, is that the attachment? That's not in the warrant, right?
It is in the warrant. I mean, I'm sorry, it's not in the warrant, it's in the packet.
Right, okay. So can we go to the top of that? Just go to the beginning of it?
Yep.
All right. So the definition of rental agency, that is the definition that you want?
No.
No. The last sentence gets removed.
The...
It didn't, the other one, I don't think, it doesn't need "from" or "fixed location" either. This is, this is a definition where we were trying to have two separate. It needs to, it needs to be inclusive of the two.
So do you want the definition, the original definition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So we're not using this definition?
No.
Okay, so it's the definition from 64.
What about...
And then that, this becomes moot, so that goes.
This isn't part of it? Peer-to-peer car sharing?
No, that has to get removed.
Right. So that's, we're not doing anything with that?
Right.
And then...
You don't need, you don't need the second sentence there.
What, a license pursuant to this section?
Shall not be required for peer-to-peer. You can get rid of that, because you'd be requiring...
So this sentence here will be added. Each sticker shall recite the registration number of the vehicle to which it is...
Yep, that could stay.
That eliminates the ability of moving it from one car to another.
Okay.
Like a beach sticker has the, like a...
Yep.
So this sentence here, in the first paragraph on page two, stays, but the second sentence that's underlined goes.
Correct.
Okay, and then, what about this?
And then I think those changes, we're just clarifying in a good way.
So A, B, and C?
I'm reading them.
Well, B adds 50...
Yes, it gives them the opportunity to increase it at their own discretion.
Yeah, turning the 50 into 100.
Yep.
So it's up to 800. So we take 140 back, you get...
Okay, so...
You get another 100, and you got, you're at 250.
We're keeping, okay, we're keeping A's changes and B's changes in the separate draft.
Except B, it's going, it's up to 100 additional medallions instead of 50.
Okay.
C, we like that language.
No, which, not the stricken C, the other C?
The, yep.
So wait, this would say up to 100 additional medallions over the 700 limit?
Correct, yep.
And then C is good as it's written.
We're keeping the new C. Yep. There we go.
Yeah.
All right, so...
And then, just to be very clear, 58-4 had a change, that's to be kept?
Where is 58? Oh, here it is, on this page, non-transferability.
That's just the actual license, not the medallions. You can't move it around.
Oh, that's for business licenses, not...
Yeah, you can't move it around from place to place without the board's approval.
Yep.
It just says unless you approve it.
Yeah.
Right, but is that, the motor vehicle rental license, Amy and Brian, is that supposed to be issued to the peer-to-peer?
Yeah.
That is different from the rental vehicle medallions.
Yeah, and that was my question, as far as the license. When you remove that sentence, does that mean they need a license? They don't need a license, but they can get medallion. So it's a business situation. I think here, individual motor stick, it was approved by the select board, that might be, it might, shouldn't probably say stickers, or individual stickers. This used to be, okay, I'm not sure about that language there, Brian, if that, when it talks about vehicle stickers, when it's supposed to be that the rental license itself shall not be transferable, this was our attempt to make that the part that can be transferred and not the stickers.
The problem in the bylaw, as it exists, is that it used the word sticker, which is really the same thing as a rental vehicle medallion.
Right.
Got mixed up in there somehow, but that, I think, just A, reiterates that the medallions shall not be transferable without the approval of the board, which is, now we've determined is already going to be said in a different, earlier. But what about the actual license? I'm not, maybe this is something to figure out some other time, but it's going to probably come up at town meeting, so we probably want to know in advance what we're talking about. Is the actual license, people who do peer-to-peer car sharing for one car supposed to come and get a license?
Right.
So I think the answer is yes.
Well, they have to get a sticker, or they have to get a medallion.
Right, but that's different.
We have to issue a medallion.
So we might as well issue them a license at the same time, I guess.
What is, what the question I would have is, what is, what is the license for a rental car agency entail? And, you know, who are they getting it from, and why are they getting it? It may, it may not be the same. And Attorney Pertin has his hand up, too.
Yep, Mr. Pertin?
Erica, can you? She doesn't have a sanitary...
It's up and down. Mr. Pertin, did you have something you wanted to add that's...
Yes, thank you.
Related to what we're talking about just in this moment?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, Madam Chair. It's really more of a question of clarification. My read of Section 58 on the issue of transferability is that the existing license holders can transfer and could sell, if you will, their licenses. If I'm understanding correctly, the change that proposes, that you are proposing removes that right, and I have a serious concern about the legality of that, for starters, because you're taking away a property right of the existing holders. I also, and I think this was brought up at a prior hearing in a prior year, the issue of that many of the existing companies may have pledged that asset as security for various loans and so on and so forth. So I'm very concerned about what I, the discussion I just heard about non-transferability, if I'm understanding it correctly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pertin. So... So, so I, I think I just had a light bulb go off. That, that sentence that we had, that peer-to-peer vehicles with one address, vehicle at an address, maybe what they're exempt from is needing a license. They can get a medallion without a license. And that separates the single car on a property from having to get a, a license unlike a rental car company, as we've thought about it up until peer-to-peer happened. Amy?
Yes. I, I would say yes. What the license refers to is a business license. That's typical, like Don Allen would have a business license. This has a business license as well. So, I mean, we did not get rid of the ability to transfer a business. It's, it's about getting medallions that are unused. That's all that was about.
So, why don't we, would it correct things to keep that sentence that we said we were gonna strike out under 58-2 at the very end and add the words rental agency? A rental agency license pursuant to the section in chapter 58 should not be required for peer-to-peer car sharing?
No, because the definition of rental agency is a person, business, or corporation engaged in the town in Antacara in the business. And they are engaged in the business.
Okay. So, maybe we just issue a license with a medallion, regardless of how many medallions you have?
Okay. We also, the other part is that needs, and I brought the issue that Attorney Pertin just brought up. I brought that up last week and was told it was not an issue because it is transferable. It is, you know, it is a, something that these people have owned for a number of years. And so, that, we may need a little more, like, looking at it, how we wanna do it. We need to examine now, what is the impact of that? Is, you know, is that gonna be challenged? Is that something that we should be, you know, concerned about or not? And how do we handle it? Because I think, you know, from a, I'm, I was trained for economics. I, I think the market and selling and things allocates things great. But I, you know, so I think, you know, but, but not when you undercut that and allow a bunch of other people to do it for free. And so, you know, so, so we, you know, we've got a, you know, we've got an interesting situation. You look at New York City, we used to have a bunch of yellow cabs. You go down now, there's hardly any. You know, because they've, they've opened it up and they, you know, and they've undercut that entire industry. And so, that's, that's what's trying to, that is what is attempting to be done here. You know, on a national scale that we're trying to figure out.
Yeah. And, and, and we're trying to nail down the details.
I know. On the fly on a Wednesday night, which is never a good thing. But, it's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah. So, I think we, I think we leave it alone, and I think that, that, so, so the medallions are not transferable. So, a license with one medallion, basically, there's nothing to transfer because the medallion can't be transferred. So, I think by making the medallions non-transferable for the single, for the, for the family that has one medallion, we can issue them a license, as it were. It's a, it's a, it's a piece of paper that complies with the bylaw, but it, it's different from an agency that has multiple medallions.
We need some legal, we need some legal and business thought on that whole point.
Yeah. So, do we wanna do this? Do we wanna even pursue this? I'll go back to the question that I asked before you were wordsmithing.
Madam Chair, we're getting so close.
I know. But we opened up a whole other-
I think we do, but we need someone, we, we can't, we can't play lawyer and business people, et cetera, right now. I, but I do think we need to look into that because we have some exposure. And we have to make sure it works for the, you know, the people that we've had in place and for us, for the town.
So, I'm gonna ask the town manager, in terms of town meeting process, how much can we leave to be figured out in language if we're adopting a warrant tonight?
Well, if it's within the scope of the intent of the article, is, there is the possibility if the finance committee were to agree for some minor wording modification, perhaps in the motion.
In their motion. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. I know.
But their time, they don't have a lot of time either, so.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I thought we were a little settled. And then, you know, it's probably to be expected that there are different stakeholders here, and some of them aren't going to agree, and they're going to cite things like legal challenge as a reason not to do this. And I'm not, I'm just saying that as, that's what happens here. I would look to town council to comment on that. Or, you know, lots of things have exposure and risk that the town does. And we won't know if it's a thing till it happens.
Okay.
And, and by the way, we already are in a lawsuit from something we didn't even change.
Yeah. So, Brian, do you have any comment on that? And then, we can maybe-
Yeah. I can, this, this may not be a perfect analogy, but, but it seems to me that it works. If you look at alcohol licenses, you know, those are also issued to a business, and they are not transferable, meaning one party with that license can't sell it or, or give it to another party. I mean, they can, but they have to come through the select board to get it approved. Obviously, the ABCC, too, we wouldn't be dealing with the state agency. And so, you know, people also take alcohol licenses and pledge them and get loans and whatnot. And yet, at the end of the day, if they, if they default on their loan, or if they wanted to give it to somebody else, they have to come through the town to get that approved. So, I think that, I, I don't think we're breaking whole new ground and taking away people's property rights here. I think that there's, I think that it's fair for the select board to, you know, have a, have a voice, have a role in who has what medallions. And if somebody wants to transfer 20 to another party, come before the select board to get that approved.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. So, so, sounds to me like-
But that's not how we're writing it. If we say they're non-transferable, then we're not doing that. What we need, if we, if we wanna do what the county council said, then we need to write that someone can come and, you know, petition us to transfer them. But we're writing right in here, they're non-transferable.
Erica, would you ever consider making these similar to the taxis? I mean, you're already setting up a waiting list similar to the taxi. Taxis aren't transferable, taxi licenses. You have to come here and it's only a legacy where that's done. I don't know why this would be any different.
Yeah. I, I think that one of the differences is that we've got, we've got 700 out there, you know, 700 minus eight out there that have been, that have been understood to be transferable or sellable for 35 years. And so, we're changing from what they've expected to something new. So, how do you do that? How do you grandfather them? I mean, I think there's, from, if I, from their, from, if you look at it from their perspective, if we just allow a free-for-all, they're gonna all be out of business anyway. They're gonna get undercut, you know, and then they're gonna have a really hard time. And they don't go out of business, but it'll be very difficult over time. And so, I think that there's an incentive on their side to actually, you know, to give back some of these and, you know, and work with us to do what we're trying to do, because then we're capping it and they'll have roads for their cars to drive on, and they'll, it's gonna work. You know, but I think if we don't, you know, we've gotta give, I think maybe the way to do it is to, instead of saying the non-transferable, say the transferable with, you know, approval of the board, something like that. But I think there's gotta be some way to allow them, the people that have done it, to be able to sell them, or be able to give them to somebody, you know, so.
Okay. So, may I suggest that we give Brian right in, instead, that the board has authority to establish a procedure for transfer of medallions, so we don't have to write it tonight, but give us the authority to do it?
That could work.
Is that a possibility?
Yes. There's, there's something along those lines at the end of paragraph C on the screen now, but that can, we can, we can revise that, make it more clear.
Okay. Denise?
Thank you. Denise Cronow. When we had this discussion on Article 64, the issue was at the time that people felt that the whole thing, being over 30 years old, needed to be reworked. And I'll be honest, since I put my hand up and advocated for at least give the select board the ability to claw back the unused medallions, so then that way they go back into the pie. And then, at least give them that authority, and then go rework it. So, my observation of this discussion is, if it isn't that clear, I'm not sure it's going to be any more successful than it was last year. So, I would love to see the select board give itself the authority to claw back the unused ones, and whatever other authority it needs to actually resolve this to what makes the most sense for the community. I think that would be an easy sell, having sat through many discussions of this last year. Thank you.
Yeah. It, it feels like that's where we are, in the change of the number, giving us the room to change the number, giving us, if, giving us the, the ability to establish a policy for transferring. So, they're either relinquished, or a request for transfer comes to us, and we'll figure out, you know, before it's implemented, what that, what that process is. And then, it, it feels like we're, we're there in a lot of ways. So, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with where we've ended up, putting this on the warrant. Anybody else?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Just a quick one. Are we, so the, the bylaw now says the number of medallions shall not exceed 700. Are, is the board supporting raising that?
We're supporting giving ourselves the ability to raise it to, by 100.
Okay.
But not actually raising it.
Very good. Thanks.
Yep. Okay.
That's simply being done by changing 50 to 100.
Correct. In the language that's in the, in that paragraph B.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Mr. Cohen, one last remark.
I think everything the board has talked about makes a lot of sense. The one thing I think you should do, like, like Ms. Cronauer said, is, and you already have that language there, is exempt peer-to-peer from auto rental, and just give yourself the authority to regulate it. And then, we could deal with all these issues outside of town meeting and let the board deal with it. So, that's my recommendation, is to adopt that language that exempts peer-to-peer from our auto rental, and instead, give the board the authority to regulate it.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen. Okay. I am, I'm gonna, I think the board's closed. This, we've been at this a while. I knew we would be. I'm unsurprised that it's taken this amount of time. Are we comfortable moving this article forward, including it in the warrant, as we've worked it up?
I'd like to read, I'd like to read a final version, but-
Yeah, I have to see it.
Okay. So, process-wise? Libby?
Well, tomorrow, Erica is gonna be spending the day. Please don't anybody call her or email her about anything other than this. She can maybe, if I might suggest, we do this right off the bat tomorrow morning, send it around. Everybody has till 10:00 or whatever, a specific time to submit their comments. Otherwise, it's going in as prepared, and Brian and Amy can be included on that. I, I think it's fairly straightforward. I took, I think, comprehensive notes over here.
Yeah. So, if Brian emails me a, a new draft in the morning, I can distribute it.
In fact, Brian, why don't you do it? And if you've kept track, hopefully you, between you and Amy, you, you did that, and I can leave Erica my notes, and you can send it to her first thing tomorrow morning, as has been discussed here.
Yes. We plan to do that.
Okay. Terrific. Appreciate everyone's input. We're making sausage. Okay. The next topic that we needed a little more time on was e-bikes and e-scooters, 'cause So, where are we gonna start on this?
Okay. So, there are two companion articles, and they are, I think, Brian, I don't recall if there were many changes from last week, but why don't you take the board through each one again?
So, let's see. One was proposed changes to chapter 57 of the bylaws. Okay, that's on the screen, bicycle right of way, which has some text already. What this, what the proposed changes would do is basically is providing some definitions for different kinds of electrical bicycles, e-bikes. And then, also, the paragraph C there in red was intended to put a speed limit on that. So, if, even if you're on one of these bikes, e-bikes, which are capable of going fast, you should not exceed 20. And if you're coming up on someone else using the path, you wanna slow down so they, they can be, you know, passed, you can deal with each other safely. And I know the chief raised similar enforceability concerns with this. We did take out some things which we thought really didn't fit well in a, in a bylaw, perhaps could just be in more on the lines of a, some signage on places to get onto the bike path. But I thought this was a compromise between what was originally provided, and I, I don't see any, I don't see any issues with these changes being approved by the attorney general if town meeting is in favor of it.
Okay. Yep. Joe, did you wanna comment here? Or should, should I take questions from the board and maybe you can help answer them? Unless you have something?
No. I mean, I just wanna, some people have said that this is to ban e-bikes and motorized vehicles, and it's, it's not. It's just to kinda clean up some language, number one. Number two, it is to, you know, this new technology, new vehicles, and just kinda bring that in the line. And, what is it, chapter 50, 59, motorized devices, you know, right now they're illegal. So, it was trying to remove that. And I'm not looking for anyone to get tickets, that's not the point. I think it's just, you know, putting in some guidelines and safety rules for people to kinda use the bike path. I, I think that that would be kinda wise. I saw something in Falmouth, a sign that basically pointed out three or four things. You know, one was keep right, you know, pass on the left, audible signal before you're passing. They had a 15 mile an hour speed limit, I think we should go to 20, and then move off the path and stop. So, I'm not really looking to, you know, get people arrested, or having the police stopping people, but I think just having this language in place would be, if, if we need it, it's there. But I think also it's, this conversation's educational for the bikers and anyone walking or whatever that's using the path, that we all work together. And as Brian Rowley mentioned to me during a conversation, that some of the things I had in here were aspirational in nature, but they are educational. And I think down the line, through BPAC and the town, that we will do some videos in some way to get them out to the boats, et cetera, go into the school systems, you know, maybe work with them in some way of getting the students, you know, some licensing or some way to kinda go and work with that. BPAC, some bike shops on Antacara are really willing to work with the schools in hand-to-hand. I know they have a program there now, but, you know, add more and more depth to this if we could. So, that's what I'm looking to do, is just, just keep everyone in the lane, keep everyone safe, and, you know, that's kinda what I was looking for, looking to do. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions from the board?
I think this looks great. I think it's fine.
Okay. All right, cool. We don't have to spend time on it. All right. Great. And then, last but not-
Passenger devices? The next section?
Oh. The companion article is Chapter 98, Motorized Passenger Devices. Brian, maybe you can go through this one, but I don't know that the issue that we've been discussing has been addressed about the express written permission. And I think in an email you indicated that could just be removed, but I don't see it's shown as being removed here.
No, it is. I know there was, it was discussed, you know, late in last week's meeting. I wasn't sure if the board had any consensus about, excuse me, about that. My understanding from the town manager and maybe others is that although this language is in there, either people don't really know about it, haven't been using it, and the authorizing official, whoever that might be, maybe not quite sure what they should do if someone were to ask it. And so if it's really not adding anything to, you know, the use of various motorized vehicles or motorized passenger devices, if it's just not, if it's really not an issue, then maybe that can all come out, which would be the, let's see, if we did that, that would basically end that first sentence after the word beach, all the way down to, in the parentheses, authorizing official, and leave it say the following vehicles should be exempt from the provisions of this chapter. And then, and then the next section, 98-2, all has to do with this getting written permission from the authorized official. So again, that whole section could come out and just leave 98-3, the enforcement of penalties at the end. So I just wasn't sure if that's, I didn't have a sense that's what the board wanted us to do, but I think it does make sense if this is sort of an unused part of the bylaw.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's asking for permission now. I don't think we need it.
Well, okay. Hold on. Erica?
I'm just wondering about the key class mini trucks and bans. Those are authorized by the Registry of Motor Vehicles in Massachusetts, so why are we banning them?
Yeah, they're low-speed vehicles, right? Some of them. Oh, there it is. Yep.
Then why would they even be put in?
I believe there's an exception in Section A for any vehicles that are registered, which the key class vehicles are currently registered by the RMV. So as long as they have a plate, they'd be good to go on a public way.
Okay.
Should they bother be listed then?
Brian, through you, Madam Chair, why was that language added?
I believe that was, that the language was suggested by, you know, Mr. Topham. And then, and then the chief clarified for me that by putting vehicles that are registered, licensed or registered by the Commonwealth would then exempted if one of these mini trucks, I'm not quite sure what they, what they look like, but that would, as I say, if they're registered with the RMV, then they can go ahead and be on public ways, et cetera.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if.
Yeah. Joe, and then Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, at the time, the K-Class was being banned by the state, so that's when that language went in there. I have not seen the image, but apparently one K-Class mini truck trying to get around traffic jumped onto the bike path and skittered around the intersection. I believe it was right in front of 45 Surfside. The gentleman said he had the video, had the image. So it, this all kind of worked all in hand-in-hand. But I know now, being on the MPDC, that that language has been removed and now they're able to be registered on Antucket. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mike, did you have something to help clarify?
I think Erica raised the point that I, the reason why I raised my hand, and I was just asked you to eliminate that for all the reasons you discussed. Thank you.
Okay. Both key class and all-terrain vehicles or just the key class?
The key class. I think the all-terrain vehicle is something a little bit differently, a little bit different than this and may not be licensed. Some all-terrain vehicles don't not have license plates, so that might be something you want to keep on.
Okay. But we haven't, we haven't gotten to the point where we have an anachronistic bylaw that is not utilized at all. No one's granting permission at this point in time. No one's authorized to grant permission, written permission correctly.
Right. And that was, that's actually been an issue because we have had a couple of people come in. A dad came in one time to say, my kid wants to ride his e-scooter on the bike path. Says in your bylaw, I went and looked at it, that I need express written permission from a town official. Who is it? And we are a little flummoxed as to who it is. So we just said, go ahead. But it wasn't in writing. And so, you know, I don't want that to come back and haunt anybody.
Contact Brooke. I said that last week.
Thanks, Matt. Funny how.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
What about golf carts? They're becoming more and more popular. Are those covered under all-terrain vehicles? And how will you address, if you say golf carts, will they be addressed at, say, like the boat base?
It's in there under F.
All right. So those are exempt.
Okay. So I'm not sure the purpose of this section of the bylaw at all at this point. So, so Brian, if we just remove this whole section about written permission, what would happen?
I think you would be fine. It seems like whenever it got put in there, it was to address a problem which hasn't really been a problem. So as I say, I, my suggestion to take it out would be have a period after the word beach in 98-1, take the rest of that sentence out, and then all of Section 98-2 because that is part of the same written permission issue. That could be removed as well.
I don't really remember 20 years ago when this was put in, but it may have been because possibly that's when e-scooters, maybe were starting to surface and we didn't really want them, but now cat's out of the bag.
So if, if we are removing the ability to have permission, is that first paragraph saying that you can't ride an e-scooter on a multi-use path? No, I mean a motorized skateboard segue. Okay. All right. So I think that's the recommendation, to get rid of the written permission language.
Understood.
I know, I know it's a little bit late and we've been at this for quite some time, but what you just said, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Is it now prohibiting the use of these vehicles everywhere?
Well, I'm a little wondering about the motorized skateboard.
There's some of those. You see people using them.
Many of them. And are they banned if we went like this?
Why don't we leave it alone? And figure out the consequences of removing it at a later date.
And we'll just follow on with our.
And I promise I'll write letters of permission.
Well, we'll just maybe follow along with verbal.
Yeah. I just don't want to do, I don't want, I don't have unintended consequences late in the game. So it's existed without problem. Let's leave it for now. What does the board think?
Yeah, who brought it? Was this from BPAC to, sir?
It was Joe. We're blaming Joe.
No, this is me.
Can't trust that.
Matt, I'm taking, Matt, I'm taking your chair tonight. I'm causing problems.
Okay. All right. So we're just going to leave it for now, leave it fallow and call it a night on this one. Okay. All right.
Okay.
So, thanks, Brian.
Now, so this, so these last two are much easier, so I can get those to Erica first thing in the morning as well.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The last item we had called out were a couple of zoning bylaw amendments. And I'm going to have Tom introduce pickleball. Sorry, it's late. It's late in the game. The pickleball thing has gotten regional and national attention and I would love, no, 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 it's not your fault. I'd love the planning director and the senior planner to comment on it, but I'll just make a editorial comment. We're not banning people from playing pickleball. We're trying to figure out reasonable regulations around people having pickleball courts close to their neighbors. That's what I think that the purpose of this is. We are not telling people they have to sell their pickleball rackets or rip up their pickleball courts if they're already out, out there and Tom's the club. So anyway, Leslie and Megan, whoever wants to follow up with me on that, but correct me if I'm wrong.
And can I just note before Leslie starts? So there was an existing article in the packet in the warrant, and I'm now showing that as being stricken. And there's a new version that came in today.
Okay. And so if you guys could explain why the changes and, and again, correct me if my summary is wrong.
All right. No, Brooke, your summary is correct. But first I'll just run through the change. The, the use of pickleball was just inserted in a section of our use chart in Section 7A of the zoning bylaw that really didn't make sense. So we just moved it from one section to another. That's the only change. And maybe it wasn't clear last week, in retrospect, we've had a lot of time to talk about the pickleball proposal. And we proposed it to be as restrictive as possible so that when the planning board holds their public hearing, they have a lot of flexibility to make it less restrictive if that's what comes out of the public testimony and of, you know, the board's discussion. So this wasn't necessarily intended to be a straight-up prohibition, but it was intended to write an article in a way that gave the board the most leeway during their deliberations. And for anyone who doesn't know, the pickleball public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow on Zoom and the meeting starts at 4:00 PM.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie. Any questions or comments from the board? That will be a public hearing where everyone can speak on the details of this. I just want a clarity on the purpose and technicalities.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to praise the planning board for looking into this. I think the only people that have been dealing with this quite a bit are the HTC, and I think it's not necessarily in their purview. I think this has a lot of impact, especially when people put it far away from their own home and put it right next to their neighbors, which has happened in a few circumstances. Pickle, they can be as loud as 70 decibels from 100 feet away is what, you know, when I was looking, looking through this, that's how loud a pickleball paddle can be and it's a repetitive thing. So the people that live around it are very impacted. There is pickleball equipment that's 40 decibels. It's less, the balls are, you know, are not as loud, the rackets. So there may be things they can do with that. There's things they can do with screening if, you know, if we, there's municipalities that have put screening in and there's certain bushes and certain ways to do it to keep the noise down and be cognizant of your neighbors. So maybe those things will be considered. It's interesting, if you use the low, you know, low noise pickleball, it's about 40 decibels. And we have a HVAC or we had an HVAC law that we put in place when we were having issues with, I think it was Sherburne Commons was really loud at one point, and that was 55 decibels at 40 feet. So, you know, if pickleball could be kept at 40 decibels and it could be, you know, and it could be sited closer to your own home, you know, on large lots, not next to your neighbor, we might actually get something, you know? So, you know, I hope that that's, I hope that the, you know, I praise the planning board for looking ahead and trying to get ahead of this because it is an issue for some of the neighbors that have to deal with it. And I think that this is, and I've had some people have written who are, you know, are very impacted and very concerned. And so I think, you know, I give them credit for trying to deal with something that's going to be a contentious issue.
And I'd just like to reiterate that town meeting process, as Leslie said, is, one must write a warrant that is structured, an article that's structured in a way that the planning board motion falls within the scope. And, and so there's some technicalities about how our form of government works in terms of writing, creating motions and amending on the floor of warrant articles that I think the community is, and certainly folks who don't live in Massachusetts or have town meeting form of government, understand. So I think Leslie's explanation about why this was crafted in the most restrictive way is, it's a technical methodology of, of the town meeting form of government that's often misunderstood. And I just want to clarify that for those who don't necessarily understand that. So, do you want to, Jill, quickly?
Yeah, the thing I, Jill V., the thing I don't understand is what are you banning? And why is that in a zoning bylaw? You have addressed noise. Noise is a concern. I totally get that. I agree with that. In fact, we found out about some equipment today that was pickle glass and it can like reduce the sound by 50%. It's very expensive, but it's, you know, that's a sport that's evolving all the time. And so I think it's really interesting, great technology, and I hope all that gets explored. But what are you banning? If you are banning noise, you're not banning noise, you're banning a kind of noise. And this is where I don't understand, why is in a zoning bylaw, like location? That's what I don't get.
Yeah. So Jill, I'm going to ask you to bring that to the planning board because they're ultimately going to craft the motion. So.
Okay. So you all are not going to come up with a general bylaw about a certain kind of noise.
We're going to, we're deciding whether to put this in or not, and then the planning board motion will dictate.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Okay.
And I, and it could, and they're putting some of it's under zoning because, you know, it may not be appropriate in small lot zoning. There might be other areas where it is appropriate and it, you know, and they can put, you know, sort of rules and guardrails around it and make, you know, for me, I would, you know, I would say, jeez, it has to be, you know, three times further away from your neighbor's house than it is your house, you know? Put it next to your kitchen window, not next to your neighbor's, you know? And that, you know, I would be doing something like that, but, you know, that's up to them.
All right. Great. So assuming the board doesn't want to change anything about this, we'll move on to cottage Leslie, was there anything you wanted to add or clarify or did we ask you for clarification? I forget. Last week was a long time ago.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure exactly. I think that you all just wanted a little more explanation, so I'll just run through it real quick. I will point out that Megan Trudell has spent a lot of time working on this particular article. It was, you know, a concept that came out of her master's degree work over the past couple of years and she's done a good job working with some, some people who may have good feedback. So cottage community is a special permit development option. The units would be restricted to households earning up to 240% of area median income. That type of provision isn't something that we have in our zoning bylaw right now. We have other year-round and other affordable options, but not something at the 240%, which I think we've all identified is, is something that's missing. And then the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would monitor and enforce the restriction. There are restrictions, reducing the structure's height, maximizing the number of bedrooms, setting parking requirements. It would be subject to site plan review by the planning board. And this is another article where the, the density calculation is, is quite liberal because the, the planning board can, you know, again, have a lot of leeway during their deliberations about how they move forward with a motion, if they move forward with a motion.
Okay. Thanks. Questions or comments from the board? Any concerns?
I have a question. Did, this is for Leslie. Leslie, did you get a chance to look at Art Gasparrow's email he sent this afternoon?
I had time to give it a quick look.
Does it, does that, does his numbers make sense? Is that what this potentially could do?
I, I think if you just run numbers, but there are other considerations. There's parking, there's septic, there's well, there's the fact that it's a special permit. The planning board can put lots of conditions on it. I think what he sent around is an absolute worst-case scenario that probably isn't viable when you consider other pieces of the project, not just the lot size and the unit size.
It's ground cover, too.
Right. But I think he worked his on ground cover. Well, you know, most likely it was worked. I don't know if Art's on. Oh, yeah. Yeah, let him explain it then, yeah.
Okay. I, the person who's identified as Sam Refurbishing Director, if, if you could just state your full name for the record when you begin to speak? And you have to unmute yourself.
I'd like to make a comment.
Hi, I'd like to make a comment about, about like, we need to refurbish everything here, so that's what.
Yep. Okay. Yep. Okay. Art Gasparo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll just very briefly follow up. You know, I think the point that I made last week, and I'm trying to make again, is that, you know, while Leslie says this is the worst case, it's also when, when folks that are looking to maximize their return on investment on the properties that they pay for, that's what they're going to do, is what you see as the maximum. And that lot easily could accommodate, I didn't have time to put all the parking on there, but it easily will fit. The separation to the structures is all there. I really think this is an article that, you know, should not be included on the warrant, is, is much too drastic. And while there's opportunity to refine it through the planning board process, it's so drastic that, you know, they had a work group, you should avoid any concerns with the open meeting law, establish a new work group, and, and do it that way, and, and not go forward with this as, as it's been submitted. I, I fully understand, you know, the good intentions of the folks that are working on it, but I think that it is so, so wide-ranging in terms of, of what this could result in, that it needs to be brought to your attention so that, that you're aware of that. And I, again, I just feel strongly, I think I'd also just like to reiterate that these, these units wouldn't count towards the shy list, and that, you know, you're going to have an impact on all of the other services, you know, on, on the island. If you allow this drastic of, an increase of, of density, essentially even if it's by a special permit, once those maximum allowances are, are laid out as they are, that's exactly what, I mean, who, you, you see it all, you know, we both, we all see it. Everyone's built into the maximum. You think this is going to be any different? It's not. So, I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Okay. Any comments or action on the board on this article?
Madam Chair, I can't not, I can't support this. I think this is, I think Art said it well. It's a major change, even though there may be regulations and breaks on it. I'm just not ready to support it at this time.
Anybody else?
I think Mr. Gasparo has some good, some valid concerns, and I don't discount them at all. I also think that a lot of work has gone in this article, and that we should put on the warrant and see what the will of town meeting is, and, or if, if it is voted down, then maybe it can come back with some greater feedback at, at another time.
So is there, I hear two different opinions. Is there, do you want to make a, a motion to exclude it, Malcolm, and see where it goes?
Sure, I'll make a motion to exclude the cottage article.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion at second. Anybody want to comment further, or shall we just go to a vote?
Oh, should, yeah. Well, we have to decide it tonight. Is that the?
That's correct.
Well, that's.
Okay. So, so I would say, all those in favor of Malcolm's motion to exclude?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No, so that motion fails. So it will go on the warrant, and we'll see it through the planning board process and town meeting. Okay. Okay. So I think that was the last of the open questions. Was there something else?
Yeah, I think there was. We were talking about tertiary and putting a moratorium on it, but we've, yeah, we've.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. We should probably talk about that because that is brand new. Do you want to?
Yeah, and I just, I, I prefer that we, you know, get rid of tertiarys then, and put a moratorium. I think we, you know, remove it, like, like, that was one of the options. I think that's the cleanest option because there, people can still do them as a, you know, as a accessory, as an ADU. It's an ADU by right, so.
So, so I prefer the moratorium route only because there's a lot of moving parts, and the seasonal communities committee will be looking at the impacts of the ADU law on, on our community in particular. And so I'd, I'd rather not mess with the bylaw until we know what the landscape is, which is why I prefer the moratorium route. Anybody else? Leslie?
Thank you. And thank you all for supporting the planning board on that last article and letting that move through the process. So we drafted a temporary moratorium that expires on December 31st.
Excuse me, Leslie. You guys need to actually adjourn your meeting. Thank you, Tom. Do you still have a quorum?
Count the people in the parking lot. I adjourn the finance committee meeting.
Okay, okay. So how many, who hears on finance? Okay, so I just.
Yes, we have two online, or we had two online.
Okay.
They're gone.
They're gone, oh.
So why don't we just do it formal? Take a motion and a second, and then a vote?
All right. I make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting. Rob?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Denise, aye.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Sorry, Leslie, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. So, as you mentioned, there are a lot of moving parts, and it's not just with seasonal communities. We have a lot of sections of our bylaw that reference tertiary dwellings. They're intertwined. This was something that came to light very late in the game, and it's a way that we can put a temporary stop to the tertiary dwellings while we're dealing with the new ADU bylaw. And between now and the special town meeting in the fall, we can figure out the best way to move forward and make sure that we do it in a thoughtful way, and that we get all the sections of the bylaw changed that need to be changed if that's the direction that we want to go. So this is temporary, so we can figure it out. And hopefully, I think it addresses concerns about the four dwelling units on a lot happening in the interim.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie. Matt, do you want to take any action, or?
I just worry, I just worry that moratorium is a, it's the M-word. People don't want to hear that, and they'll be lost in the, you know, I, I don't know, I'm sort of agnostic whether we have a moratorium or whether we get rid of it and bring it back if, you know, if and when it makes sense. But I think, you know, I'll do either. If people think we can explain a moratorium and it isn't going to turn into a mess with people misunderstanding, then that's fine.
Okay. So, in the absence of a motion to do anything else, it is currently in the draft. So we, good leaving? Leaving it there?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like the census. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I just, I just, what she wrote, just the attorney wrote, it just seemed a lot, it seemed pretty clean. But it was, but it entails a lot of other stuff, so I'll go with it.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. So, I keep trying to bring us to the, to a close on this, on the warrant. This feels like a momentous moment in our town cycle.
One other. I had a question someone asked me to ask about Page 167 Amelia Drive, 99-year lease to Affordable Housing Trust. And, you know, I think I know what that is, but please explain it for the camera so that they know what it is.
Yep. So, it is that the, the request for proposals for that is based on a, a lease of the property to the developer on a 99-year basis. So it just authorizes the select board to execute that lease. It's the, it's the model that the Affordable Housing Trust is using to, to request proposals for that development. Did I get that right, Tom? All right.
And what if somebody, what if a, a bidder makes the highest bid and wants to make it all parking? Can they do that?
No, there, there's an RFP out. It's in response to an RFP.
All right.
That has specific parameters.
I'm just asking the question that the person that asked me was concerned about.
Yeah. It's not an open RFP to lease the lot for whatever. It's to lease it under an approved proposal for development.
For specific, under specific parameters.
Yep.
Yes.
And that, and that request for proposals is available on the town website, on the procurement page. You can get direct access to read the actual RFP to, to determine the parameters of it. Yeah.
Matt, what, that, that property is also unique in that in the RFP, there is housing and like a nonprofit's bay. I forget how it's word in the RFP, but it, it is a multiple use because of the unique shape and nature of the property.
And the zoning in the area. Yep. Which is commercial on the ground and basement and residential on the second floor. Okay. Is that good, Matt? Okay. So, are we ready for a motion to adopt the warrant?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Si. Big si. Okay. Strategic Plan Update?
So, as a result of your October 22 strategic plan annual retreat, which hopefully you all have a vivid memory of, some changes described in the retreat report have been incorporated into the updated strategic plan, which is shown on the screen. The changes were all identified and discussed in an after report that came out. It was, it's in the packet, and you all got it a couple of months ago. And if we follow past practice here, the board would adopt the updated plan, and then Town Admin will reformulate our focus area teams. If you recall, one of you is on each of the five teams. And we'll begin our implementation planning with reporting out to the board every so often till we have next, go around next fall. So we're looking for.
Move to adopt?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any committee reports?
There is, but I can't remember.
At least it's not nine o'clock. I neglected to say, as we wrapped up the warrant, thank you to everybody across the system. Erica, and this is, and Libby, and all the, just everybody who's involved in putting this together, everybody who, you know, weighed in on the different articles, the chief, everyone. There was, there was a lot of work that goes into this, and I just want to express my appreciation for all of that. It's a, it's a big lift. So, on that note, are we ready to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everybody out there listening, watching. See you next week.